Okay, guys, it is 7 o'clock, so I'm gonna go ahead and call our regular meeting for January 14th, 2021 to order and turn things over to Commissioner Edelman for his communication.
So, Lord, we're in tough times in this country, and Lord, I just pray for peace. Calm down the anger, calm down the anxiety, and, Lord, get us back together. I pray this in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. All right, up next, we have the approval of the agenda. I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda. All right, we got a first and a second. Any discussion before we move to vote? All right, hearing done, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
This meeting is being recorded and are transcribed.
Sorry, I was a little late on the trigger, sorry.
Yes, okay, that's okay. And any opposed? All right, the agenda is approved. Up next, we've got the presentation of Officer Seth Woods, Advanced Law Enforcement Certificate.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Captain Moxer DeYoung of Police Department. I'd like to thank you all for being here today to recognize one of our own, Officer Woods, for his dedication.
He didn't understand it.
Can you hear him?
I can't. I can't.
Go ahead. Officer Woods, before he has here to recognize one of our own, Officer Woods, for his dedication and devotion for safety and protection of others. Officer Woods has been with the Youngsville Police Department since September of 2018. Officer Woods began his law enforcement career with the Ray Force Police Department in June of 2018. During his tour as a law enforcement officer, he has worked with patrol, special traffic units, and narcotics. Today, Officer Woods has reached professional milestone in his career, achieving of his Advanced Law Enforcement Certificate. The Advanced Certificate is a part of the Professional Certificate Program, which was established by the North Carolina Criminal Justice and Training Standards Commission. Under this program, dedicated officers may receive statewide and nationwide recognition for education, professional training, and on-the-job experience. In North Carolina, officers go through several certification processes throughout their career, and the highest level is the Advanced Certificate. The minimum requirement for the Advanced Certification is 48 hours of education or training points, along with at least 12 years of law enforcement experience. Please join us today to congratulate Officer Woods for his accomplishment.
The actual award panel sits together, just like you are in this room, and they vote, they look at each piece of training that Officer Woods has done, and everybody else has come through to this one, and they say yes or no on these. So, these aren't a sure thing, it's not something you just get for being in there. You have to do a lot of work. I think less than a third of our department has this, so I stand.
Fair enough, all right. You don't care, all right, you want me to go through? This might be problematic.
That's fine. You wanted to sit right. You're right in here, I'm just right here.
You don't want to be in the background, Carrie? Excellent.
Did you get one, sir?
Thank you, sir. Thanks very much. Congratulations, Seth.
Thank you.
All right, and next up, we have our public hearing section of the meeting. Item A is annexation petition 2020-4, Youngsville Academy Charter School Incorporated, Hicks Road. I'll go ahead and then open the hearing to the public as of 7:06 PM and turn it over to staff to see if we have any additions.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, we have several individuals that are joining us via electronic means this evening, so to ensure everybody's got an ample opportunity to be heard at this hearing, I'm just gonna go ahead and go down our little participant list and ask if anybody's got some comment for us. So, bear with me one second while I call this rule. All right, so our first participant is phone number ending in 8130. That phone number ending in 8130, would you like to speak at this public hearing? And if you're muted, you'll need to use the command *6 on your phone. All right, I will move on to the next participant, and I'll call you again, just to be sure at the end. We've got Anna Asquith, would you like to speak at this public hearing?
Hey, I am not wanting to speak about this issue, I do want others.
All right, thank you very much. We've got Mr. Christopher Lewis, would you like to speak about this issue?
Uh, Seth, wait, hold for the next question.
All right, thank you, sir. We've got Mr. David Bauer, would you like to speak about this issue?
Uh, I like the other one, wait.
All right, thank you, sir. Mr. Scoggins?
Not on this issue.
Thank you, sir. And Mr. Holliday? All right, and Mr. Vasquez?
No, Mr. Fisher.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Cochrane?
How are you, Mr. Fisher, thank you.
You're welcome. We've got a gentleman by the name of Mason?
No.
All right, and Mr. and Mrs. Klein?
None.
All right, and we've got Suzanne? All right, we've got Mr. Trisha Wabi. I apologize if I didn't pronounce that correctly.
Um, no, sir, I'm waiting for an addition.
All right. About halfway through, if you bear with me, we've got a phone number ending in 6355. Would that individual like to speak?
That's the final number of long lines.
All right. We've got an individual, 1357 is the last four of the phone number. All right, last four, 2604. Last four, 4829. Last four, 7223. Last four, two-
Hey.
Yes, go ahead. 7223.
Uh, yes, this is 7223, we need to come to the next item.
Thank you, sir. We've got 2277. We've got 1430. Next is 6514. And lastly, we've got 7790.
Yes, good afternoon, gentlemen.
All right, thank you, sir, good evening.
Yes, sir.
All right, Mr. Mayor, I've called through the electronic attendance. Is there anybody else that's meeting with us electronically that would like to speak on this issue? I'll let you be heard at this time, recognize you. Hearing no requests, Mr. Mayor, I think that's the end of our roll for this issue.
All right, were there any updates from the staff report that needed to be discussed?
No, sir.
All right, and hearing no comments from the public, we'll go ahead and close the hearing as of 7:11 and move into item B, which is request to re-pace Wiggins Village Phase 2 from single-family residential 3 to mixed-use 1. I'll go ahead and open the hearing to the public as of 7:11 and turn it over to the staff report.
Ms. Hurd, would you like to-
Hey, uh-
Ms. Kleinger, thank you.
Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
You can.
Okay, thank you. So, we first met with the developers at the end of August to discuss their proposals. They are intending to locate Phase 2 of the Wiggins Townhomes development on the subject property. Phase 1 is currently located across the street in county jurisdiction, and their current location does not provide room for expansion of the development. As required by the ordinance, they did hold a neighborhood meeting at the end of October. At which time, several concerns were expressed by the residents in the adjacent neighborhood. They, the applicants opted to pull the position from the November planning board agenda so that they could revise their preliminary plans to accommodate the concerns they heard. Those concerns were that taken into consideration by the developers and incorporated into their plan that was included in the year package and that was presented to the planning board at their meeting. The proposed rezoning is from SFR 3 to mixed-use 1. Property is grounded by single-family zoning on all sides, except the east and south, all of which are compatible with the proposed zoning. Any one zoning also provides a good transition between the single-family zoning to the north and the civic zone properties itself, which is where Youngsville Academy will be located near the new high school. This also does not constitute spot zoning, as there are other residential developments in the area. Furthermore, the rezoning is consistent with both the goals of the comprehensive land use plan as well as the future land use map. The planning board, within the manner, we recommend approval of the rezoning at their December 1st meeting, and the planning staff always support the request as it is consistent with the comprehensive land use plan and harmonious with the existing zoning that was surrounding the park.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Kleinger. To the commissioners, have any questions from Ms. Kleinger before I open up for comments from the public? Okay, hearing done, we'll go ahead and open the floor for comments from the public. I'll turn it over to Mr. Cordero to do a roll call, and if you have any commentary, now would be the time to address that.
Thank you, sir. I'll recognize Mr. Hauser, who's with us. He's the chairman of the ABC Board, if you'd like to speak on this issue, sir.
Hey, there, what? Thanks for taking, Hauser, I live in 45 Kelly Lane, Stevens Ridge subdivision, which enjoys its planned development. In favor of the development. I know a lot of people in there, but it's not, because they feel like it's low-income housing. But on the project across the street, the units rent for $450, interior units rent for $1,200. So, that to me is not really low-income. And payments about now. I'm speaking primarily on the reputation of the developer. I was involved in Phase 1. The two developers have developed a lot of property in Youngsville, and every single development that I've been engaged with with them has been done very professionally, to increase the value of the surrounding community. And frankly, I've been a business developer all my life, including this phase of the Chambers of Commerce, to increase the standard of living within our communities. And I do believe in the social teachings in my church, where human dignity is a very important thing, and that we ought to, as a community, look for ways to provide affordable housing for people, for our community. My daughter's a third-grade school teacher at Youngsville Elementary. We've got a great police force here, so I think this dignity will be an asset to the area.
Thank you, Ms. Hauser.
All right, so I'll go ahead and call the roll, Mr. Mayor. The first on our list is telephone that's joined us, ending in 8130. Recognize 8130. And we can't hear anything, so if you're speaking, you'll need to use the command *6 to unmute yourself. 8130. All right.
Are you able to hear me?
Yes, sir, we can hear you.
Hi, hi. Are you able to hear me?
Yes, sir, we can hear you.
Yes.
Thank you very much indeed. My name is Brian Ranelle. I live at 345 Steenman's Way, Youngsville, which is just off Hicks Road. And off the back, may I please associate myself to the award that you gave earlier to a member of law enforcement? Thank you for so doing. I'd like to address the proposed rezoning. Forgive me if I'm a little pedestrian in my presentation. I had lung surgery for lung cancer a short while ago, and I'm still trying to recover my normal aspiration. So, I'll take as little of your time as I possibly can, but please bear with me if I run out of time. The proposed development, for which rezoning is now under consideration, was randomly opposed, and I think unanimously opposed, to the planning committee when they held their public hearing. I don't think there was one speaker that supported the proposal, and yet, it was passed. The proposed rezoning to mixed-use is even more vigorously opposed, and I'm sure you will hear from many along that same line this evening. I oppose it on environmental grounds and on the grounds that current infrastructure, that is to say, the capacity of the roads in this area cannot support further development. Indeed, I contend that the development in the Cedar Creek Hicks Road area is already out of control. Now, on that specific point, I ask of those commissioners that have not personally visited and viewed this area between the hours of 3:00 and 6:00 PM and who are not personally familiar with this area, you now recuse yourselves from further consideration of this matter. At present, on Cedar Creek Road, there are seven subdivisions, or high-traffic, excuse me, high-traffic density establishments. By name, they are the developments at Hadley at Cedar Creek, Whispering Times, Clearwater Creek, Sea Crossing, Hidden Lake, North Pastures, and Cedar Ridge. Many of these very large construction sites are still far from completion. My question to you immediately is what are the reports that you have commissioned estimating for future traffic volumes to be? Whatever those reports say, if you've been asked of them, should they also include the traffic generated by Frackton High School and the middle school, both of which are on Cedar Creek? Please, may I remind you, and much as we hoped, the end of COVID will herald the return to the school road. Turning to Hicks Road, there are seven active subdivisions, or housing developments, not including Youngsville Academy, which is 100% school road incident. Ladies and gentlemen, this is simply too much. The traffic density and the environmental quality, that is to say, air quality, and I would hope that you may have consulted the Division of Air Quality at state level to look at this. Our current air quality is measured at 31. Rowing is at 10 or 11. We need to maintain this, and we need to look at this very carefully. So, at the very least, I would ask you to vacate this application for further consideration, but more importantly, I would like you to know. Thank you very much for listening to me, and good evening.
Thank you for a comp- pretty comments, Mr. Ranelle, Mr. Cordero, who's next on the list?
All right, we've got Ms. Asquith. Recognize you, Ms. Asquith.
Hey, good evening. Hey, can you hear me?
We can, good evening.
Yes.
Okay, good evening, Ms. Asquith, 35 Kelly Lane. I am here on behalf of the H.R. Labor for Stevens Lynn. We would reiterate what Ron just said, as well as we are at behalf of the board opposed to this, the rezoning. The original plan had it, the townhome connecting to our neighborhood on Industry Court, and also had the barrier of trees. And the direct impact to the neighborhood for this was gonna be, was gonna be simply dangerous with added traffic, with the cut-through, so many families in our neighborhood walk through at all times of the year, walking out with kids, you know, dogs, et cetera. It even was so during fall season, how we have our third, our 170 homes roughly have their mailboxes at our, it's key on to the clubhouse, would mean that there would be significant more traffic driving through there, would even have to pass our clubhouse and the mailboxes to get to the townhome. I could go on about some of the main issues having that connection. And it also gave the appearance of being one neighborhood under same rules, the same covenant, which is simply not true. After the October meeting, the developer and its engineers firm did take wholeheartedly those concerns and created a new plan, which I believe is upon guidance and recommendations to pass, at least for the rezoning purposes. And that would have no connection to our neighborhood if they had a fence along with the tree barrier along the two property lines. So, the connection or no connection does address the traffic concerns directly for our neighborhood. There's still the issue of, you know, the traffic, as Ron was saying, throughout Youngsville and just having this here in the last seven years, well, over seven years, the traffic in Youngsville, even if this part of Youngsville has gotten out of control, as I'm sure you all know, and it's just having schools, and having neighborhoods, and townhomes that want to make your worst of course. But speaking directly to the direct impact on neighborhood, we do have a pool, as I'm sure you're aware, and I don't personally know what the proposed specifications are on the fence that is, that the developer proposed as far as appearance and the height of that. We already have problems with nonresidents coming into our pool, and we have damage done by nonresidents, and also the liability use as well of nonresidents using it. But we're concerned that having townhomes, but up right next to our pool and our property line, even with the fence they are putting on height, we're concerned about the people keeping the fence getting into our pool. And generally, being in the clubhouse area that is really not part of the townhomes at all. And I'm not gonna speak too much more on the outside and past, but if other neighbors here wanna speak about some of that. But we would ask the commissioners to not approve the rezoning. We also, there's also the issue of, if it is rezoned, if something happens with the developer and first the townhome, and it falls through for whatever reason. Then we're left with, and it's been restricted to be rezoned, or against rezoned, then we're left with a situation of, you know, what cannot be, it may not necessarily be townhomes again, maybe it could be rezoned to some other commercial, not rezoned, but some other commercial use to be put there, which is even worse than having a townhome that's not claiming to be a homeowner. But we would ask the commissioners to not approve this zoning. It is, however, the commissioners are still inclined to approve it for the purpose of these townhomes. We ask that, in the alternative, that it be rezoned with the intention that the plant would be from this townhome, with the most recent plant, with the no connection and the fence and the tree. And for the stated reasons that I've mentioned, and stated reasons I'm sure that any other neighbors will mention as well. So, thank you, and I appreciate your time.
Thank you, Ms. Asquith. Mr. Cordero, who do we have next?
All right, next on our list, we've got Mr. Lewis, Christopher Lewis. Would you like to be recognized at this time?
Hey, thank you, yeah, this is my name, this is Christopher Lewis. I'm a principal engineer, SL engineer, and I'm actually in representation of the developers in Iwo Jima and Iwaki. I'm, my office is located at 8218 Primorou, and that's Raleigh. Uh, everything is very solid, recap of the project and kind of where we are thus far. The, I'll add a few things. The developers are very open regarding their intentions to this project, and have shared those plans throughout this process. And I frankly believe that the class is going to vote beyond in taking consideration and feedback, and they will feedback into consideration in adjusting the plan. Quickly summarize to the board, the proposed zoning plan is 671. We just, we had originally proposed to connect the town and subdivision to Industry Court as Anna just relayed, but given the feedback we received during the end of the meeting, we were, you know, the zoning plan was revised, and we removed that connection point. In addition to removing that connection point, the developers proposed to construct a six-foot vinyl property fence, so that's, that's addition that are called out in the plan. You know, I'll address some of the comments that have been stated thus far. Traffic, we understand traffic is an issue, you know, based on institute, this transaction engineer's trip to the manual. The proposed development would add less than 500 daily trips, and less than 100 AM or PSDM peak hours to the roadway network. You know, all those totals are less than the threshold to trigger any kind of impact analysis to this project. Just as a reference point, based on the ACTE E-just generation manual, approximately 170 homes at Stevens Lynn validate over 1,700 daily trips. You know, so we're not talking half and half here. You know, traffic is obviously a product of community growth and development, and progress don't occur until it will be necessary by the ETEP through the analysis and warranty. You know, it's understanding that a traffic signal analysis is gonna be required for the intersection of Cedar Creek and Hicks Road, and that analysis will be performed as part of this project as it moves forward. In regards to, you know, let's see what was mentioned here. Oh, but you know, in protecting the neighborhood adjacent, you know, what happens if this project doesn't move forward and the developers back out? Well, you know, the next initiative tonight is the developer's agreement. That, that agreement offers some protection to the town in the sense that this thing will ever, if it ever falls through, this whole process will have to restart again. So, you know, those concerns I think are, you know, maybe not warranted, but, you know, in this situation are not prudent. in this situation are not prudent. Um, what's the last thing I have here? I do want to mention another thing that came up here in the neighborhood meeting and in the planning board meetings, and I think was mentioned tonight about some environmental issues. You know, the biggest topic that was raised was in regards to this ex-ol order, drainage patterns, and how this, how this proposed development would affect Stevens Land. Um, as the professional was here, the existing apartment was clearly oriented to the southwest, away from the neighborhood, and towards the proposed ex-ol water control measure that we're showing on the plan, to the southwest corner of the bulk of the construction site. And furthermore, as this proposed development falls under the North County Department of Environmental Quality's review jurisdiction, that the developer will have to meet the state's regulations on order to give any development standards for ex-ol water. Um, anyway, I just wanted to introduce myself, and if you have any questions, you can board and ask me additional questions for me, so I'm here.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Lewis. Mr. Cordiero, who's next?
All right, Mr. Bauer, we recognize you at this time, if you'd like to speak on this issue.
Yes, oh, my name is Dave Taylor. I have a wife in the city, moved into Stevens Land at three fifteen Stevens Drive sixteen months ago. And it's time to say we love our home here. The neighborhood is incredibly welcoming, and the neighbors are friendly and kind, as is mentioned in the hour of the day. We encounter the neighbors walking away, all of the children playing in the arts and riding their bikes and skateboards down the street. We really love the Youngsville area. It's awe inspiring, and it's all soothing to drive down the Woodlands, lined with woods that, lots of practically apples with sunlight, and opening the fields with the cattle, horses, and deer. It's a beautiful place, which is why people want to come here. Uh, I'll echo Brian's concern, and I certainly appreciate the gentleman who just spoke and his, his comments on the traffic. But, um, it's just another, another drop in the bucket that is already overflowing. Um, soon after moving here, we became aware of the traffic congestion isn't around Youngsville. Uh, we're actually beginning to feel sorry for nonretired people who have to observe certain hours dropping their children at school and taking the work. Uh, we still haven't figured out the right times to pass through Youngsville on Main Street to avoid the traffic backed up past railroad tracks to Alt One. We have experienced traffic backed up on more than one occasion, at least a half a mile along Cedar Creek Road from the intersection of Main Street, requiring up to four cycles of traffic light to pass through. It's pretty obvious that the roadways were constructed here to support rural traffic and are inadequate for the population increase that massive development is inevitable. Um, this increase in traffic, uh, I think wastes fuel and time and decreases the quality of life for the people living in the area. And the traffic problem will become much more severe if the building is, is teed to allow high density development, or I just talked about the Wiggins Place, uh, once the door is breached, um, it's quite possible that more, uh, high density development will occur. Uh, we're not eager to try to prevent someone from eating the land they've been set, however, it is our mistake, and the proposed property has not yet been purchased by the developer. So it is actually is developed. Uh, in our early years, we didn't understand the reason for zoning. We thought it was just a mechanism to try and tell people that what they couldn't do, but people want to control themselves. But we've come to an appreciation of it as a necessity in recent years. Uh, we made our home here in single family, our home in the area of single family homes, because it was a zone for it, and because we had an expectation it would not be subjected to the environmental pressures of high density rental housing with its potential for future failed maintenance, squander, and crime. And I'm not saying that that's going to happen, but that's, uh, anti-characteristic of, of areas with rental housing. And I might add, that's what I've heard about the rental rates there that would be charged in this area. Uh, it, it just amazes me because it's, in essence, no more than the mortgage that we pay on our own. Uh, it's off the table, actually. That's, that's pretty amazing, but, um, that's what it is. And additionally, the architecture of the setting of the homes is pleasing and promotes neighbor, neighborliness and goodwill. Uh, the Wiggins Wells on Hicks Road, I, I, this isn't actually a, um, a mean thing to say, but they look very utilitarian and they're not all that, they kind of look barren and not all that healthy, and it just affects the, the overall area. Um, and one, one last thing here that we've been concerned about, and that is, Brian had mentioned, uh, how many developments are happening in the area, and I just can't help but wonder, Cindy and I can't help but wonder, um, if any of the things that, that absolutely are fantastic about being in this place, and that is those beautiful stands of trees and fields, if there's going to be anything left, um, at some time in the near future. Um, I'm hoping that, that the people who are doing the planning are, are considering that, considering the quality of life and the need for, um, space and the need for natural beauty in the area of our homes. Okay, thank you very much.
All right, thank you for your comments, Mr. Bauer. Um, Mr. Cordiero, who's next?
Mr. Scottens, we'll recognize you at this time.
Thank you. Um, my name is Chris Scotten. I live at two-twenty Healy Lane at Stevens Land Subdivision. Um, I echo a lot of what's already been said tonight. Um, one thing that I would like to point out is that there are huge traffic problems in Youngsville that have yet to be addressed, that there is, there is no foreseeable solution in the future, which is the truck traffic through town, which exacerbates the problem that's going to become worse as we continue to develop. I would propose to the town of Youngsville to fore-sold any further development until some of these problems are addressed. There are two extremely large developments that are going up on Hicks Road now, right at, right at the corner of, um, I'm sorry, on Cedar Creek, it's the corner of Cedar Creek and Dick. Um, was probably somewhere in the neighborhood of what will be two hundred homes or so from what it looks. I haven't seen the plan. I don't know exactly what it is. Um, what someone else pointed out, the, the traffic being controlled by the proposed rezoning to apartments, um, is, is just a drop in the bucket from, from what's experienced here, but it's still adding to a problem that is not being adequately addressed. Now, I can't trust strongly enough my fears of what these townhome developments are going to do to our property values in the subdivision surrounding, especially Stevens Land being right adjacent to it. Uh, and that's a huge concern for those of us who bought here in the hopes of seeing our property value drive, and that it has happened, but will that sound up once, once these, these townhomes are developed? Um, yeah, I echo everything that everyone has said in opposition to this. The other thing I would, I would like to make the commissioners aware of is the fact that it's a feeling among a lot of us that the decision has already been made, and this is just a pro forma, um, exercise to say, we, we dot all the i's and cross all the t's. I implore you to really consider the things you're hearing tonight before you make your final decision, and I thank you for allowing me to speak.
All right, and thank you for your comments, Mr. Scottens. Um, Mr. Cordiero, who's next?
All right, um, so the, the name that I see is HR Guest. I don't know if I can give any more information, but I'll recognize that person if they'd like to speak at this time. All right, move on to the next individual. We've got Juan Vazquez.
Hi. Um, my name is Juan Vazquez, and my wife, Janet, are the homeowners at twenty-five Go Out Healy Lane. Um, and I'm here to pretty much express our consensus agreement of this project in all aspects. Um, sometimes in our lives, we come to a crossroads, um, and I feel that this is one of those times for us as individuals and, and as a town. Uh, progress for the sake of progress sometimes leads to regress. Do we, as a town, value the fact that we are a town and all the things that come with it, or do we want to be the next city of Wake Forest where the daily commute and writing accidents are a daily headache? I just want to name a few reasons why I think, you know, rezoning this will be a bad idea for our town and for us here in Stevens Land. A patchy new rental townhome community adjacent to our subdivision where the average home prices are over, are over three hundred thousand will undoubtedly have a negative impact on our investment as our home values will decrease. Um, for most of us, this type of investment of this amount is the result of long hours of studying, working, and saving, and definitely the best gift that we can be for our children when our time comes. And I don't want, and you should you, to be them of the value property. It is not correct for my neighbors and our hard work and long hours to be undone based on somebody else's decision. Eventually, it is proven that most renters don't take personal pride in where they live because in the end it's not theirs. This brings me to my second point. The developer's original plan for these townhomes were to have them be section eight homes. Are there some sort of guarantees and assurances that the developer can not make them section eight homes? This was conveniently left out from our initial meeting. Having this type of development next to us further dividers our home and further reiterates what I stated earlier, that most renters do not have personal pride in where they live or their surrounding areas. All along in the first meeting with Chris, he mentioned that there'll be fourteen hundred dollars each of, but, but the section eight was never, never came up. I'm also assuming that Youngsville Academy does not know this. As was mentioned, traffic already is a headache on Hicks Road during the early morning hours and afternoon, uh, due to all the new developments that are going around. I understand that Chris mentioned something that, you know, a traffic light will come up, or, or at least a study will come up for Hicks Road and Cedar Creek. Um, that definitely has to be done because it's already a headache. Um, and I highlight the semi-unit rental community would add at least a hundred, a hundred vehicles or up to a hundred forty or more just from that community alone, in addition to all everything else that's going up around. This ties into overall safety. As I fear that all, if all the developments go up, it will put more stress on our police, fire, EMPs, et cetera. Are we doing something to address that? Also, the developer's plan shows insufficient parking spaces. Where are they going to park? Alongside the road, which is a safety concern and an overall eyesore for, for our town? Or, or in our old clubhouse, which, as we call it in Tilden, can be unwarranted retaliation from the car owner? From a storm drain standpoint, we, this was addressed in our original meeting, and I know Chris mentioned it now as well, our subdivision has a long history of storm drain issues that according to the county goes against what their topography shows, even though we have videos and images of our, of our storm drain issues. So going through with this development will have more of an effect, uh, on our storm drain issues regardless of what their topography shows, because frankly, I do not trust it, and I'm sure that most of our, my neighbors do not trust it either. These are just some of the obvious negative issues to jump out at. In summary, I realize that access to Industry Court has been taken off the table, and I appreciate that, but I would like to have an assurance that no other access point to Stevens Land subdivision will be done in the future. Having a rental community will negatively impact us in safety, traffic, storm drain, home values, and quality of life in the future. Also, I guarantee you a assurance of the developer not turning these homes into section eight homes at any point in the future, I believe is warranted considering that that was the original plan. Overall, I would say no to any type of development, but if the developer is determined on doing something, maybe a lower than the townhome purchase type, um, townhomes could be appropriate. In closing, I want to thank you for your attention, and I hope that you decide against approving this project. I started this letter by posing the question. I can almost be sure that all of you love the small-town feeling of our town, especially when, when we hold events like the Halloween event, the Christmas parade, and the fill up, fill up a cop cruiser with toys or kids. The question is now up to you. Do you, Mayor Ferrer, and the commissioners, love the small-town feeling as much as we do, or are we going to let it become a city and all of the negative aspects that come with it? After all, there is a building and a police station with a new sign retrieved, Youngsville Town Hall, not City Hall. Again, thank you for your time, and we're hoping you decide against this project, and realize when a rental community, section eight or not, will entail to the overall picture of a small town we love and call home, Youngsville. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Vazquez. Um, Mr. Cordiero, who's next?
Yep, our next participant, Mr. Cotry, Tom Cotry.
Hi, good evening. Tom Cotry, two-ninety-five Healy Lane. As a former public official involved in similar decisions in a beautiful rural community, I would implore upon those of you given the authority to make this decision, to carefully consider the character of the community and the neighborhood now and in the future. Does this action, is it truly part of a well-planned future vision? Please carefully consider all aspects, including potential future aspects of this decision. Thank you for your consideration, and thank you for your time. Thank you for your services, community.
And thank you for your comments. Uh, Mr. Cordiero, who's next?
Next, we have a gentleman by the name of Mason. Recognize you, sir, at this time. All right, next on our list, we've got Mr. and Mrs. Klein. Recognize you at this time. Mike and Lindsey Klein.
They just heard Mr. and Mrs. Klein, but you want to speak.
If you have anything to say, now would be the time.
All right, move on to our next participant, Suzanne. Suzanne, we'll recognize you at this time. Our next participant, Timothy Treshalabi, we'll recognize you, sir, at this time.
Nothing, sir, thank you.
All right, next participant on the list is phone number ending in six-three-five-five.
That's Juan, that's me, Juan Vazquez, I already spoke.
All right, thank you, sir. Phone number ending in one-three-five-seven. Our next phone number ends in two-six-zero-four. Our next phone number ends in four-eight-two-nine.
All right, you have so much to say, and I have nothing to add.
I'm sorry, Erin, thank you so much. Um, next phone number ends in seven-two-two-three. Our next phone number ends in two-two-seven-seven. Our next phone number ends in 2277. Next phone number ends in 1430. Next phone number ends in 6514. Looks like Suzanne's having some trouble with her speaker, but I'll read her comment she put in our chat box that says, "My speaker isn't working. I just want to say I agree with all of the objections of the new development proposal as we are not guaranteed that Section 8 will not be able to move in. Just because rent is higher doesn't mean it isn't being supplied from the government." That's Suzanne's comment for the public record. And phone number ending in 3635. All right, having called all the participants in our chat room, our electronic attendance roster, I'll ask if anybody would like to speak that has not yet been recognized. And I'll remind those that are joined with us via phone that if you are muted, we have occurred you. You'll need to use the command star 67 to mute yourself. I'll see if anybody else wants to be recognized at this time.
All right, doesn't sound like we have any more.
No, sir.
Okay, all right. So having no more comments from the public, we'll go ahead and close the hearing at 7:52 and move along in aisle C, which is the development agreement. We can finish the phase two. I'll go ahead and open the hearing to the public at 7:52, and turn it over to Ms. Linger for a step.
Hey, so first I'd like to address a couple of the comments. The development agreement will address many of the disconcerns that's been discussed this evening. Is it lawful for developers liable to developing the property to the town's standards? Also, as far as I'm aware, this is the first I've ever heard of it in Section 8 housing. I was not aware of that before this point. But this is the development agreement for the parcel considered in the rezoning. There's been a 51-year townhome development on the site and strictly over a key year period. Development agreement is a new tool that the town community that was introduced during the rewrite of the zoning ordinance. Essentially, what it is, is a voluntary contract between the town and the developer that entails the obligation of both parties and also lays out standards and conditions governing development of the property. It provides regulatory certainty, establishes the schedule for development, coordinates the provision of public studies such as water and sewer, and increased management of any environmentally expensive land. Any land that could fall must comply with the standards in the zoning ordinance. So in this instance, this site would be within the NE1 zoning district and that's subject to NE1 zoning regulations. The development plan included in the package as part of the development agreement is compliant with those regulations. At the time the report in the package was prepared, the county attorney was in the process of reviewing the agreement and presenting her feedback. That feedback has since been incorporated, and the signed agreement that you see before you this evening was revised from the original to incorporate your suggestion. The planning board again voted unanimously as a generalist meeting to recommend approval of the development agreement contingent on the board approving the zoning condition. For the proof, because the requested status of the development agreement is separate by the general package and by the way deal. The plan is also compliant with the requirements of the zoning ordinance, and the development agreement is also, again, consistent with the goals of the comprehensive plan. For those reasons, that is also recommended for the board to approve the development agreement.
Okay, thank you for that.
And that's all I have.
All right, thank you, Ms. Linger. Now that we've had our staff report, I'll go ahead and open up to comments from the public. Do we just want to open it up and just say if anyone wants to speak up instead of one through a locker 25 person?
That's, it's your mayor, sorry, it's your meeting, Mr. Mayor. I will do my best and I can, I believe I can see, you know, little bubbles highlight on here when people speak. Hopefully, there aren't too many at once. But I'll see if we can recognize anybody. We'll try and do this in an open forum. If you could briefly just say your name, and we'll go ahead and recognize you if you'd like to speak at this time.
Chris Lewis would like to speak at this rate.
Mr. Lewis will recognize you at this time, sir.
Hey, thank you, Chris Lewis, the first one to have filled in the series against P218 Creekboro Ridge Row. I'd like to, actually, my question is, since we're in the middle of the jury, I'd like to take my opinion as directed by the state of the state in the last. Well, the comments here, you know, one thing I want to point out is there's a lot of scrutiny this subdivision from cities where there are only two, and they're both big. There is also the minority district, but you know, we talk about 170 units, a lot from the cities where there are only two of them are actually joining this subdivision. A comment was made about pride and ownership. You know, the developers don't believe that the ownership and pride in your residence are mutually exclusive. Renters living in existing townhomes across the street have local maps and cottage plans and holiday decorations, and that doesn't seem like certain individuals who are not proud of where it is. And frankly, I believe the passing judgment on individuals is because they don't own their home and are unsecured by it. Parking was brought up. We actually see the town of Youngsville's parking requirement. So much so, the town had asked that there would be a better use of the space. So we were going above and beyond there. Storm drainage was brought up again. I don't really know how to say this, but storm drainage will not set feedings. Storm drainage in this subdivision will not set feedings. A statement was brought up about, you know, connecting to, other connections to cities. Cities only has one sub-road, and that was in 34. There will be no other connection points as there are no other connection points. You know, I will address the Section 8 housing thing. I'm not aware of where that comes from. That has been stated by any of our developers, and we have this plan for Section 8 housing out there. I'm not like, knowing anywhere that river has developed. I'll say again, alternative housing types, you know, and these are essential for the growth and development of strong communities. This project has, as I stated, is consistently built to cover town plan 2040 to cover its landing plans and specifically under the plan for the rezession. The project provides the much-needed alternative housing type of community. And tonight, the pitch, a rezoning petition is the first test of that fact. With the new high school being proposed, suggesting this property, you know, this project would provide a transition between the single-family residential and the non-residential zoning, the civic zoning. We certainly hope that, you know, this rezoning petition receives your support, and this is always a great to receive your support, and if the legal and court support allows land Shen's to the community. I think that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Lewis.
Again, if anybody else would like to speak, if you could say your name, and I will recognize you for the public record. Would anyone else like to be recognized?
Yes, this is Harry Scott again.
Mr. Scott, we'll recognize you.
Just, in terms, I understand the plan for, and it's all well and great that there are plans to grow the community. I'm all in favor of that. But along with that has to be a plan for improving the infrastructure to support that growth. From what I've seen and from what I've heard, that, that plan is not in place yet, or at least not a plan that addresses the problems that these developments are creating. That's a huge concern, that again, if it's not addressed, drives property values down. I agree, we should not assume that people moving into rental units are going to be any less prideful in their place of residence than any of the residents. That is an unfair assumption. I am more concerned with, we're packing so much growth into a small area in the Hicks Road, Cedar Creek area with plans for a high school for Youngsville Academy, the growth of the grade school that's already there, plus the housing developments that are springing up like spring plants out there that are putting pressures on the infrastructure that they just cannot support. And again, I strongly urge you to at least slow down these decisions and these developments until some of these other problems can be addressed. First of all, give the tough traffic out of Youngsville. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Do we have anyone else?
Yes, please, sir. If I may. Apologize, I cannot remember your name, but I believe you hail from the United Kingdom. We'll recognize you, sir.
Alex Jordan, you should recognize me, you're attracted. Thank you very much. I'd just like to say, I hear back and clear the comments made by Chris, who of course receives his salary from those who engage him. And I commend him for his, his job for his employer. But I do wish to underscore the comments of the gentleman that spoke just immediately before me. We're talking about the maintenance of the environment and the infrastructure. Should anyone there have any doubt about what we're saying, please come and drive around here. I do understand that there's only one county commissioner who actually exists in Youngsville, and some live in the very northern parts of the county and would not have on a regular need to come and visit this part of the county. It's getting a bit rabid down here, guys. Bit like living in London, which is not the impossible balance, is what I hear. And so please, just consider some of the things that you've heard tonight, and please don't enter this meeting with a preconceived idea of the outcome. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Vazquez. I would like to address something really quick. I think there's some concern or some confusion on the commissioners here in this room versus the county commissioners. Every commissioner and the mayor lives in town limits and pays taxes. So I just want to make sure we're clear on that.
Would anybody else like to be recognized during the public hearing? Move on to, I believe I heard a second voice.
Yeah, hi, this is, thanks for taking the mic, I'm mayor and board commissioner. My name is Matt R. Saffier, and I'm also on the City's Land Board, live at 42 Go Out of Eden. And I appreciate you guys taking the time to listen to this. Just wanted to just kind of support President Anna on a point. Just wanted to kind of, and another development that hasn't been spoken about tonight is one going towards South Princeton. It's another development, I believe it's rated at, I believe it's rated to have about three, maybe 300 homes there, even more. I understand they have access to Capital Boulevard, but there's also the possibility that they'll go towards the, go down Hicks to Big Creek to get to the middle school, obviously, which is there, which is probably the testing ground in Youngsville. I also wanted to add to that, of course, Dr. Premier react with my, my daughter's pet doctor is losing a home due to the development of the high school, and also due to the possibility of this townhouse, home community, if the builder or the owner, or she said the owner of the land is looking to do something with this plan, will make a contributive act if he has Dr. Lee, so the kids have a home to play. So again, I appreciate the time. Have a great night.
All right, thank you for your comments. Do we have anyone else?
This is Juan Vazquez.
Mr. Vazquez, go ahead.
I just want to address something, because I thought for a period, they, I'm not about the renters having, don't have personal pride. I feel it's been taken out of context. I did not mean that they are quote-unquote worthy of owning a home or something like that. I'm just saying that...
Oh, no. I think we lost Mr. Vazquez.
Bear with me one moment. We lost the connection. Join right back in. We are, but not audio. The audio dropped out. Bear with me.
Welcome to the Audio Conferencing Center. You are now joining the meeting. This meeting is being recorded and or transcribed.
Mr. Vazquez, can you hear us?
I sure can.
Bear with us one moment. We lost you just for a second. So I apologize for that technical difficulty. You dropped off where, you dropped off where we were hearing you.
I wondered if there was a, yeah, buddy.
No, we dropped off, you were speaking to the...
Yeah, it was there, yeah, I'm like...
You were speaking to the...
Yeah, I...
Ownership question, pride of ownership.
Right, that someone had mentioned, or someone, or basically was saying, kind of, at the point of, the rent, me speaking badly about renters or not having, quote-unquote, be worthy of owning or me having judgment. It's not about passive judgment. It's, it's a known fact that the rental companies and stuff like that, they, they request security deposits. Why do they do that? They do that because not all of them, but some, the, the rental community are mess. And I'm not saying I rented before owning homes. So I completely, you know, I'm okay with that. It's, you know, but the same way, I can't just have judgment on anybody. Don't have judgment that I include everybody, and that they're all quote-unquote bad people. So I'm just saying, as I mentioned, the pride of ownership. You take care of what you have, and there are renters that do take pride in their, their organization. But if, if they all did, then all these companies would in charge security deposits in two months' rent, in three months' rent upfront, just so they can take care of their property. So that's what I was trying to say by that. And going back to Mr. Lewis's thing about the topography, that he reasserts that, we get the same reassurances from when we complain about our own storm drain issues. You know, and we get no help from nobody, even though we have videos and images and everything going on. And they say, oh, it shouldn't be like that. Well, if it shouldn't, then how come it's happening? So I, until I see it, and hopefully I'll never be able to see it, because hopefully this will go, this will be rejected, this plan, but I, I do not believe anything that our topography shows just because here it shows that we shouldn't have an issue and we do. So, thank you.
All right, thank you for your comments. Mr. Cordiero, do we have anyone else?
Anybody else would like to speak? We'll recognize you. If you could speak out with your name, please.
If there's nobody else, may I make a brief comment on another subject, another allied subject? subject?
Does it have anything to do with the development agreement that we're discussing right now?
Well, actually, yes, it does.
Okay, I'll allow two minutes.
Thank you. Increased traffic will further wreck the railroad crossing at the top of Cedar Creek as it enters Framington. Will you guys please, on another day perhaps, prosecute that problem? That railroad crossing needs serious upholstery. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right, do we have anyone else? Going once, going twice. All right, and with hearing no other comments from the public, we'll close the hearing at 8:11 PM. We'll move along into citizens' comments. I will open the floor to any citizen who has any commentary other than the public hearings that we just entertained for the last hour.
So we will recognize anybody, if you could just shout out your name, this is the time people are recognized on any issue of public concern.
All right, hearing none, we'll go ahead and move along to the consent agenda, and the action requested here is to approve the consent agenda as submitted. Do I hear a motion to approve?
I make the motion.
All right, we've got a first and a second. Any discussion before we move to the, all right, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Commissioner Headland, are you with us? I believe I see his phone number. Commissioner Headland, if you can use the command star six, if you've muted your phone to unmute yourself, we cannot hear you at the moment.
Hello?
We can hear you now, sir. Do you go aye or nay on the approval of the consent agenda?
I said aye.
Thank you, sir, we apologize. We hear you nice and loud now, thank you.
Good deal, all right, the consent agenda is approved, we'll move along into old business. Item A here is adopt annexation ordinance 2020-4, the Youngsville Academy Charter Incorporated, Hicks Road. The action requested here is to adopt the annexation ordinance 2020-4. Before we put it out to vote, is any of the commissioners have any questions, comments, concerns for Ms. Klinger? I feel like we've gone over this one pretty much in doubt, so. All right, hearing no comments, I will entertain a motion to approve. I move as approved.
Second.
All right, we've got a first and a second, from Commissioner Headland. Any discussion before we move to the? All right, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
He must be talking at the same time Joe is.
He's seconding, I think it's an aye.
Fair enough, all right, the ayes have, all right, moving along into new business. Here is the Northeast Area Study Presentation, Brandon Watson.
Mr. Watson, we'll recognize you at this time.
Hey, Mr. Mayor.
Hello, sir.
Yeah, hey, Mr. Mayor, this is Barry from Dick Lane, so I'm just curious, maybe we can take this for another time. Since you all want to comment briefly, the part for the high school for Youngsville Academy, how does this relate to the land use project, which is actually right next door?
That, so that would be something that we would have to discuss at a separate time. We've already moved past the citizens' comments section, and we've gone into new business.
Yeah, actually, I just wanted to put that up here.
Thank you, sir. If you could email that question to Ms. Erin Klinger, she'll give you a staff response. Her email is eklinger, that's E-K-L-I-N-G-E-R at townofyoungsville.org. Thank you, sir. Bear with me one moment while I pull up Mr. Watson's slides. Mr. Watson, are you still with us?
How are you doing? Yeah, Brandon Watson here with North Carolina and Chapel area Metropolitan Planning Organization. I'd like to pull that up, I'll give a quick intro before turning it over to Tennessee with Stan Tech, who's going to take you through number two board briefing. I think you heard from Aaron probably last year in the summertime timeframe, as we kind of were going out to all the different boards to get an intro about this study and everything. And so if you don't know anything about it, we are basically, I'm with the Chapel area NDO, and we do area studies like this to get more robust public engagement, and kind of take a deeper dive into specific transportation network issues within a smaller area. We have a very large region, so recommendations from this area study are going to inform our 2050 Metropolitan Transportation Plan, which is our region-wide, long-range transportation plan that we update every four years. And this area study is actually an update to the 2014 one. It includes Youngsville, obviously, and then unincorporated areas of Wake and Franklin Counties, and also Fun, Franklin County, Knightville, Raleigh, Roseville, Wake Forest, Wendell, and everyone. And we're updating this study now to produce some near, mid, and long-term recommendations across all modes. So we're taking a close examination and update of land use, associated with data forecast, we'll have some more public engagement in the spring, and we're refreshing policies and priorities that may have evolved since that original study back in 2014. So with that, really quick intro, I'm going to turn to Tennessee and Stan Tech, who's going to give you an update on where we're at with the study and what's next in our study.
Thanks, Brandon, appreciate it. Let's go ahead and jump on the next slide, it's very complicated, should I just introduce them, on what we're doing here and why? Next slide, please. Awesome, so I want to cover where we've been, where we're now, where we're heading, beginning with where we've been, so, and finally, so public engagement initially kicked off in April, we had an interactive web map, which had more than 340 comments of individual locations and points of interest. We had an online survey, it was 2500 participants and respondents, and a private website, neatupdate.com, which is over 3,000 pages at this point. We supplemented that with some stakeholder interviews, we held 19 different focus group meetings across a couple days, and got real specifics on certain topics like equity and transit and underserved populations and development and housing. We also held a public symposium on Tuesday in June, Tuesday and Saturday as well, and then we held monthly meetings with our core technical team through Brandon and the Chapel area NDO. All this to say, we've done a lot of outreach, and what we've heard fast has been distilled in what we're calling G I principles, or how we're going to apply that to the project. Next slide, please. So I just want to run through a summarizing of some of the interesting notes. Next slide, wait for the refresh. The interactive web map, yeah, so we received more than 340 comments, we grouped them by certain comments types, and as you can see, clustering on the left-hand side of where those comments are located, whether speeding and traffic congestion and safety, in the operating corner, or whether it's barriers to walking or intersection improvements in the lower left-hand corner. And then also, there's a lot of variety of comments that we just read through all those and synthesized them as well on the right-hand side. Next slide, please. With our online survey, we asked a number of questions, just want to highlight three big themes that we got out of that. Number one, more than half of our transportation funding dollars should go to non-vehicle mode of transportation, or at least that's what survey participants wanted to see, 51% of the $100 were on non-vehicle mode. When we asked about where future developments should be located, it was all in detail, it was either in your downtown, in your current development area, or near those community centers where infrastructure already exists. There was apprehension about building in rural areas or elsewhere. And then lastly, development type, a lot of respondents focused on quality of life, amenities, things like restaurants and entertainment, dog parks or recreation facilities, open spaces or conservation parks, shopping and retail, things like that, a lot less interest, or at least half the amount of interest, in new housing type, that just kind of dwindled as the options went along. Next slide. During the public symposium, which we had 60 attendees, we asked a lot of polling questions, and we're just kind of hitting on a couple key themes, greenways and trails, sidewalks, filling in the gap, that came up a lot, and then complete streets, people talking about roadways that aren't accommodating for all modes, we really should be focusing on complete streets improvement. So, key themes from some of the polling we received during the symposium. Next slide, please. So among these, there's other topics, we distilled and synthesized everything into G I principles, there we are, talking about mobility choice, access is the same as opportunity, redefining our infrastructure, connectivity between neighborhoods, and getting more collective streets opened up, so we can get that grid and network, preserving and enhancing our open space, and then balancing our communities, helping you lose work and play in a safe place. I think we learned that lesson with COVID, that we're all living and working in a safe place, maybe a little too much at this point. Okay, so G I principles, let's move on from there to this one. We also took that feedback and outreach, and we discussed some possible land use scenario planning exercises, and this was a lot of fun, we looked at what was plausible for development between now and 2045, make that 2050, and we looked at what's possible, what could happen, and what could change. So we came up with a base scenario, a couple of alternative scenarios, and then we created a fourth blended scenario, that puts the best features of all first three together into a scenario that we can evaluate a little further. This is one output from that analysis, it just kind of shows the roadway network, and gets that congested roadway condition, trying to look at the trends between, you know, different segments across these four scenarios. And if you have, next slide, please, you'll see there's other ways of measuring the difference between these scenarios, there's also a tabular form. So this is just kind of showing the metrics or values of each of these criteria, whether they're land use or housing, or foreign land, or impervious surface, or transportation at the end. And then we, which of these three scenarios improved upon, or remained the same, or maybe a little kind of reduction in the quality and quantities of those measures. So some of those changes are positive, like there's the scenario B and scenario four, tremendous increase in the walkable area and near transit, and then some measures, you know, it was a negative number, but sometimes a negative number is actually a desirable outcome. So just a way of measuring and placing and icing here, but there's a lot to compare, and we think with scenario four, we kind of got the best attributes of these two. Next slide, please. So that's where have we been up until maybe September, now let's talk about where are we now in the fall. So, next slide, please. If we drove this project into three buckets, we'd be near the end of bucket two, with some elements of the project beginning bucket three, the documentation, draft recommendations. We've checked a lot of items off the list thus far, and now we're really starting to distill what people have said to us into a cohesive project of recommendations by those moving forward, and we're entering that public review and approval phase. Next slide, please. So in order to do that, we've begun validating a lot of these roadway conditions, and our process is really to look at each roadway section in the region, corridor by corridor by corridor. Next slide, please, waiting for the roadway validation to show up. And with each of one of those corridors, we're looking for highly congested portions, we're incorporating improvements from local transportation plans, we're looking at what else we can contribute to this in the wind away from long-range improvements, whether widening or access management, or collective treatment. Collective networks being a bunch of two-lane roadway connections, just to form a grid, there it is. So let's go to the next slide from there, and talk about alternative modes, because of the transportation planner, that's what I'm really passionate about. So recommendations for alternative modes, biking, walking, riding, transit, this is a very long-range plan, we're looking at 2050, so we're evaluating all feasible recommendations along that timeline, we're not just looking at today and tomorrow. So we developed a framework for how we can classify the myriad of bicycle, pedestrian connections between near-term improvements, midterm improvements, and long-term improvements. And we really use local comprehensive plans to kind of help us guide how we should make this, kind of from the center outward of these communities. Regarding the transit needs, we're also looking at variety of service enhancements, number one, extensions of the existing service areas, number two, to come into new territories, to improve amenities and the technology that's associated with those kinds of stuff. To look at technology enhancements that could help the first mile, last mile challenge, get people to and from, reliable transit service, and also exploring community circulators, so there's a way to hit kind of all these communities in the Northeast, or Northeast Area Study, with a commuter service option, and also looking at passenger rail possibilities as well. All these are being refined over the winter into the spring. Next slide, please. So where are we heading? Want to give you a heads up on where we're going with this over the next three months? Next slide, please. We're refining all those recommendations even further with our core technical team, we're going to start prioritizing based on community need and with public engagement, we're going to host a virtual public open house, which is going to be a website, that allows you to enter a virtual tent and view a lot of our information upfront, and provide feedback and survey form, and online platforms as well, and we're going to have that open for like a three-week time period, so people can comment their leisure, and explore and see what we have, and we're going to post all of this to our website, neatupdate.com, under the event category. What we're looking for by March is kind of revise all these recommendations, so that we can move forward with the development of the 2050 MTP that Brandon spoke of, and all of our recommendations will fold right into that process, which, capital, we're looking at a much larger area than the Northeast Area Study, so ours just roll right into that process. Tentatively, we're looking for a completion in June, if not September. Next slide, please. So, why am I really here today? The COVID-19 situation has shifted what would have been in-person engagement to virtual platforms, and that's really been a challenge. We're trying as fast as we can to reach out to underrepresented members of the community, and so before we get around to doing that, we want to reach out to your constituents and just ask, are you guys having any public events like farmers markets, other opportunities for us to see that kind of what you're doing, to share information about our product, help us, friends of work, and get people to partake in our virtual open house, which is upcoming. So if there are opportunities, we really appreciate communicating those, and how we reach these communities. Brandon, your point of contact there, and so with that, we're moving forward, and we can't wait to have you guys help with that.
All right, sounds good, thank you for the presentation. Do any of the commissioners call or in-person have any questions? All right, hearing none, we appreciate your time, thank you so much.
You get the gold medal, gentlemen, for lasting for the first hour and a half before you did your presentation, thank you.
Good deal, so we'll move along into item B, which is the request to rezon, Wiggins Village, page two, from San Antonio Residence Three, to mixed-use one. The action requested here is to approve the rezoning request as proposed, we certainly heard a lot of commentary this evening, both were against. It sounds like to me that the recommendation of the planning board is unanimous, and I'll just kind of open it up, if you guys want to have any discussion before we call for the motion, I'll open it for you.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, make some staff comments, sort of, before the board deliberates, just wanted to address a few things. The first is, and Ms. Klinger, I'll provide you an opportunity to follow me up as well, I may take some words out of your mouth, and for that, I apologize. As the mayor noted, this decision was recommended for approval, or the annexation, rezoning, my apologies, was recommended for reapproval unanimously by the planning board for a couple of different reasons. I think the most important reason on the minds of the members of the planning board in making that recommendation was the very long and arduous process they went through when they approved the Y D O, what we call the Y D O, and when they approved the future land use plan and the future land use map. Those documents were made for a purpose, and that was to let the developer community and the community at large know what the town intended to do as far as future zoning decisions, and so these... And so these, uh, plans that we're discussing tonight are consistent with that plan, and so that was, I think, one of the main reasons why they decided to recommend approval. Um, one of the other things that I want to address is we encourage civic engagement. We certainly are appreciative of all the comments we've received this evening, but I think that a lot of the comments are, uh, a bit, a bit misdirected insofar as, uh, the two main issues I, I heard about were transportation and there were some environmental issues as well. Um, I think transportation, the traffic issue is probably the one that would resonate with this board the most, and so my staff comment there would be that a lot of these, um, traffic issues, especially I heard a couple of comments about trucks, are not within the purview of this body. You know, those decisions are to be made by the North Carolina Department of Transportation, um, and they're to be made and influenced potentially by the, the board, the Franklin County Board of Commissioners. Um, and so I would encourage, uh, the individuals that are interested in potentially rerouting, for example, truck traffic through, uh, Youngsville. Um, I would encourage you to reach out to the North Carolina Transportation Board, for example. Our representative on that board is Ms. Valerie Jordan. She represents Division Five, which is the division that covers Youngsville. And so to the extent that you would want to reroute traffic or make any changes to, for example, US One alternate or North Carolina State Highway ninety-six with transit through Youngsville, which is the source of most of our traffic, then I would encourage you to communicate with those individuals. I also highly encourage you, as most of the individuals that were speaking this evening were, uh, outside of the corporate limits of the town, to, to engage the Franklin County Commissioners, um, and ask them to exert as much influence as they can over the North Carolina Department of Transportation and the member of the Transportation Board to have North Carolina DOT allocate the funds that are necessary to ensure that we're managing transportation and transit through Youngsville as responsibly as possible. So those are all the comments I have. I don't know, Ms. Klinger, if you have any additional comments?
So was that for me to cut out for a second?
Yes, Ms. Klinger, I'll recognize you if you have any additional comments.
Uh, no, there hasn't been time. Uh, you've covered everything that I was thinking for, really.
Thank you, ma'am. I apologize, Mr. Mayor, but I just wanted to share that for the, the elected officials' consideration.
Absolutely. And that's how I was just going to open it back up to the commissioners really quickly ahead if they have any, um, clarifying questions that they want to ask prior to, uh, moving forward.
I'll make the comment. Um, so obviously I live in town, I have children at the middle school and high school. I'm about it all the time and the traffic is awful. But, um, I think that, uh, I think Mr. Scotty said that, that traffic is yet to be addressed, and I know that the town has been working hard to the capacity that they can, like you say, and the DOT really has, um, they're going to move it forward. Also, as you mentioned, um, the 2040 comprehensive plan, that is something that we asked for feedback from everyone that lives around here. We had multiple public hearings, and I do think that that was something that we chose forward because we thought that that's where the area needed to go. Um, and rezoning does follow that plan. Um, I agree that we do need to support the infrastructure, and I think that we're doing that because we can't move towards that. Um, and that did seem to be the biggest issue. Um, and on the side note, I think that we need alternative housing types. I think that's an important part of growing the area.
Hey, I'll comment as well, Commissioner Brain. Uh, I live on the west side of town, and both of my kids go to Youngsville Academy. Both of my kids participate in the GATS sports, uh, so I travel through here, you know, two, three, four times a day, sometimes back and forth. And, uh, I mean, I know it does get backed up sometimes, but it usually takes me four or five minutes to get through town limits. It's, uh, it's not really as bad as, you know, what I'm used to when I go to work at home. Um, I mean, we, we have pointed out in our meetings with the DOT that, you know, we've got these developments and we're going in, you know, to keep it, and in their minds, it's very difficult. Uh, but again, that's, that's up to the DOT to handle, you know, and we've got a meeting coming up, trying to facilitate a conversation between us and the county and the other towns to, um, demonstrate or, you know, present the plans that we have going forward and see what efforts we can put in place to address that, and, you know, addressing the truck traffic. There are a lot of options that we're, you know, trying to look at, and, uh, just looking at, at the concerns I want to hear, you know, I see the traffic gathering, it was valid. Uh, I mean, I, I live in a, in a neighborhood that is comparable to Stevens Land and the law ups. We have sixty houses and twelve of those apparently, and, you know, so that's a big portion of our neighborhood or rental properties, and we definitely have the issue with those. Um, we worry about people coming in in your neighborhood. We've got a development across the street, um, that's, uh, three hundred and some homes. We see people walking through our neighborhood plenty of times, you know, on the streets and enjoy, and we haven't had the issue, so, um, I, I think that the concerns we're , you know, taking into account for the type of your neighborhood and change that, uh, things, and it only belongs to, to lots of the neighborhood, you know. That's just my comments. I don't see, and it's part of the environment. You know, the front portion of the garden clear, the general stuff about trees, that's still a small area. I mean, the various amount of trees that we're taking out for Stevens Land, sure, it's very, um, I mean, I remember driving by my neighborhood, one of the trees, and I'm now live there, so, I mean, all of our neighborhoods, everyone's one of the trees. So, it's, it's part of growth, and I would say this is even more efficient in that the amount of people that are living in this area, of course, taking up that much space is more efficient than a large group of people. That's my comments.
All right, sounds good. Uh, Commissioner Headland or Commissioner Johnson, did you guys have any, uh, commentary prior to, uh, moving forward? All right, hearing none. Uh, I'll repeat again, the action requested here is to approve, uh, rezoning request as proposed. Do I hear a motion in kind?
This is Commissioner, I'm sorry.
Uh, go ahead, go ahead, Commissioner Headland.
Hello?
We can hear you, sir.
Go ahead.
This is Commissioner Head, this is Commissioner Headland. Um, I, I talked to the mayor earlier today, and I actually, oh, I'm familiar with that area anyways, but someone involved with that pantry there and that general vicinity, but I also took a drive out there myself, um, and I went through that current development across the street, and I was, I was pleasantly surprised. I felt, I felt good, I'm just being real honest with you, you know, everything was decorated, so there seemed to be a lot of pride there. Um, our neighborhood here too, where we live, it's with the passion, it's now in Phase Five, and, uh, yeah, we have some traffic coming through, but I think, I don't notice anymore, um, from those homes that are being built. I'm probably, I don't know, I notice thirty, forty homes up on the hill right now or in, or in process. Um, I know that the, uh, truck rerouting is, is, is something we want to be able to help facilitate within the DOT. We realize that in our forty, forty-year plan, so, um, you know, there's going to have to be funds, obviously, but that's, that's hot on our, hot on our topics. So, and I just want to thank everybody for all their comments. They were really well thought out, and, uh, I just want to appreciate it. Thank you for, for standing up and speaking. That's it.
If I can say something to you real fast, um, there are a lot of neighborhoods that are going in, Monceder Creek Road, and I just Googled that Youngsville Academy has three hundred and thirty-two students. Um, so that's, uh, potential of three hundred and thirty-two cops going to Youngsville Academy per day in addition to the high school and middle school. There definitely is a traffic issue, not just the truck traffic in downtown, because I, I don't know that that really relates to what we're talking about, but I've seen a creek and hicks, that's an intersection. As much as I would love to go to the DOT and petition that they put a light there, we can't wait for the light and, and build. It's just not the way that it works with the infrastructure. So it's unfortunate, and hopefully as we know and as we move, then we see what's happening and we can work through that, um, but I think it's very much that.
Yep, understood, understood. All right, uh, Commissioner Johnson, I think you're the only other one that hasn't spoken. I'll, I'll give you the floor for a moment if you'd like to speak or if you'd like for me to continue on just to-
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, absolutely. Uh, you know, it's, the area to the cruise and the picture own has been a problem area for a while. I don't think there's something we can go to, to Youngsville Academy or, I mean, uh, private schools, to help with not having the bell on the plane, dropping off and dropping home, picking up time, being different. I mean, it's just got to be a little bit of a different plus, um, so there's, there's not everybody trying to get to the same spot at one time. That, that's a huge issue in the morning and in the afternoon. Uh, it's, it's obviously a concern for, um, neighborhoods. Um, every time that we add something like this, it's hard. It's always the type of property that's going to emphasize where you are, affecting property that is, uh, the property community, all that. Um, it always, uh, you know, it, it gets late at night, which is a good thing after the, after the, the people who look at it and attach their judgment on it. Um, I think there's some things that hopefully we can do or the county can do or in time the North Carolina Department of Transportation can do. Uh, but right now, we dealt with bypasses, talking about bypasses ever since I've been on the board for fourteen years, so, um, it's not something that happens every night. And unfortunately, it seems like there's a neighborhood going in every other week or every other month. I feel, I feel for the folks that live in that area because of that, um, taking kids back and forth to school and going through that area all the time, basically on a daily or weekly basis, that it can be a problem. And, you know, everybody, everybody wants the same thing that we want on a weekly, that we see small town people, and I think that. Um, unfortunately, that's an area that, in the, in private county, that's, that's hot right now as far as where people will be. I don't know that, I think the board can really tackle that growth. Um, you know, a lot of that stuff gets cut out on the county road. So, um, I, I appreciate the folks that came, uh, that were, you know, they called in and, you know, I, I feel for everybody because I've seen the drought that has been up there this twenty years. So, um, I don't know, I don't know what we can do to help these individuals that are crying for them. So, um, yeah.
All right, well, thank you for that, Commissioner Johnson. And, uh, yeah, so there's nothing, uh, no additional comments. Uh, again, we're at item B, request to rezon, Wiggins Village, Phase Two, from single-family residential three, it's an issue one. Uh, I'll repeat again, the action requested here is, uh, was approved, uh, with a hundred percent by the planning board is to approve rezoning request as proposed. Do I hear a motion?
I'm going to approve the rezoning request.
All right, you've got a first, do I have a second?
Second.
All right, we've got a first and a second. Any discussion before we move to vote?
Please identify who made the motion and the second.
Sorry, that was, uh, Commissioner Brain with the first and Commissioner Red with the second. All right, any additional discussion before we move to vote? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, and that means there's no, no, Commissioner, uh, Commissioner Williams showed, correct?
That's correct, okay. Yes, sir.
All right, motion carries. Uh, item C is the presentation of annexation petitions. Uh, item I, twenty twenty-one dash two, Marshall Wiggins, twenty-four sixty-eight Cedar Creek Road, and item I, twenty twenty-one, that's three, Wiggins Village, Phase Two.
As there was so much, I just combined everything together. Um, the Marshall Wiggins area is at the intersection of Cedar Creek and Higgs, where that old farmhouse is. That is a voluntary request for annexation, and then of course, Wiggins Village is, you know, we have just been discussing, um, now that it is moving forward, they would like to, um, annex into the senior system.
All right, and then item D is resolutions directing clerks investigating petition received under General Statutes one sixty-eight, dash thirty-one for items I and II. If y'all, you know, repeating again, I can, but it's a tongue twister the first time, so, um-
I have another question.
Sure.
I would like to know how the annexation of either of those is going to affect police protection in that area and how to move police out there to check on things or first response? Like how does that affect all of that if we annex it?
Can you speak to that, Captain Moxie?
Sure, Ken. Uh, we will be looking at permitting of the housing, the house, all the housing that we knock, but, um, be sure the chief police will sit down and discuss it down in a straight manner, and, um, definitely add, add more force so we can, uh, send the coverage.
Uh, and thank you very much. The additional comment I'd have to that is, uh, I choose my words wisely because I don't want to disparage any decision that's made by any of our peers. Um, but the, the police forces of, for example, the towns of Franklinton, you know, Bun, not less so at Lewisburg because it's bigger than us, um, are not nearly our size. We almost have twice as many, not twice as many, but we have about fifty percent more officers, and it's because I have taken a very deliberate approach in recommending to the board that when you have and anticipate having the record level of growth that we are going to experience, whether we like it or not, because of the jobs, et cetera, in this area, that when it comes to police protection, you need to be ready for, you need to be ready before the calls for service start coming in. And so I would tell you that based on the composition of the force and the, and the very excellent recruiting efforts that Chief Whitley and the entire command staff have done, we have no hesitation about providing police protection for these upcoming developments. Now, if we need, for example, additional, uh, facilities, which we don't right now, um, then it would certainly be an option to, um, you know, maybe purchase a small amount of land, you know, or as part of a developer agreement, for example, acquire a very small parcel of land to build a police community center or a substation, something of that nature, and that's certainly in the plan as well, uh, once we determine that this, the current force, uh, needs to be increased or they need additional resources in order to maintain the, I think, very high level of police protection service that we enjoy today.
Any additional questions, comments, concerns? All right, hearing none. The action requested here is to approve the two resolutions as presented. Do I hear a motion to approve?
I'm going to approve these resolutions.
Got a first and a second?
Thank you.
I'll give, I'll give that one Commissioner Johnson. Okay, all right, fair enough. All right, any discussion before we move to vote? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
All right, and that means none opposed. Uh, item E is the presentation of certificates of sufficiency for annexations. Um, I'll read them one more time just for the record. I, twenty twenty-one dash two, Marshall Wiggins, uh, twenty-four Cedar, uh, twenty-four sixty-eight Cedar Creek Road, and I, I, which is twenty twenty-one, dash three, Wiggins Village, Phase Two.
As I do the child records investigated and I've seen the annexation petitions in the timely manner, uh, both of them are ready to go. Marshall Wiggins sent those signatures, signature for both of them, and Wiggins Village is on by incorporation and his proper signature, um, was on that annexation petition as well, and the descriptions of property are under.
All right, thank you for that, Miss Heard. And, uh, so item F is resolutions fixing date of public hearing on question of annexations pursuant to Mocteau Lional Statute, two sixty-eight, dash thirty-one, based on I and dash thirty-one, based on I and II, from earlier. If you want me to repeat it for the record, I can certainly do so now.
You are good.
All right, the action requested here is to approve the two resolutions setting public hearing for February eleventh, twenty twenty-one. Do I hear a motion to approve?
Motion.
I make a motion to approve.
All right.
I never made that motion in I or the second.
In reverse, we'll hear, okay? Um, any discussion before we move to vote? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Please clarify those that made the motion and those that seconded it.
Yeah, so actually Commissioner Redd got the first, and you got the second, Commissioner Headland, but she said she was feeling generous tonight. She would be willing to give you the, the actual motion if you wanted. Is that what's here?
Just interested in the name, thank you.
Uh, okay, random person, um, yeah, okay. So, that would have been Commissioner Redd with the first, Commissioner Headland with the second. We have the speed now?
Thank you.
Thank you again. Yes, sir, thank you. All right, um, item G is development agreement, Wiggins Village Phase Two. Uh, any comments from Mr. Cordero?
No, sir. Uh, Ms. Klinger, did you have any additional comments?
Uh, no, sir, not at this time.
Thank you.
Thank you for that. Uh, so again, the development agreement, Wiggins Village Phase Two, the action requested here is to approve, uh, development agreement as proposed. Do I hear a motion to approve development agreement as proposed? I'll move to approve the development agreement as proposed. Commissioner Brain? And do I hear a second?
I make a better-
Commissioner Headland, I'll give that one to you. I think you, you beat him just by a, uh, tag goes to the run, but I think you had him on beating the first. So, um, so that motion was made by Commissioner Brain, and seconded by Commissioner Headland. Do we have any discussion prior to moving to vote? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
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 All right, and that means none opposed. Uh, item H is consider interlocal agreement with Franklin County Public Utilities to execute water and sewer improvements in connection with the town's Main Street Improvements Project. Um, I know that was in our packets, and it was pretty extensive. So, uh, Mr. Cordero, did you have anything that you wanted to address in your setup?
Uh, very briefly, this pertains to the, the scope of the utility improvements that are going to be completed on our Main Street project. Um, we look forward to working with the county. We're very grateful for them for collaborating with us. Um, this is necessary just because, at the end of the day, it's one project, and there has to be a single individual, uh, responsible, and because we're the, the primary recipient of federal aid on this project, we'll be, uh, that, that entity. And so essentially, the way it'll work is, we're agreeing on the terms of the, scope of the utility agreement and the cost of the agreement. The town will pay the contractors, and then as set forth in the agreement, within thirty days of paying the town contractors and us invoicing the county, the county will go ahead, write back, and just pay us for the same amount. So, it's no skin off our back, but it just makes things clearer for the, uh, the, the construction firms that are actually going to be doing the work, that they'll be working with us. Of course, along the way, we will engage the Franklin County Public Utility Staff to ensure that they approve all the work, and that it meets their standards.
Good deal. Any, uh, questions from the commissioners for Mr. Cordero? All right, hearing none. The action requested here is to direct the town administrator to execute agreement.
I make a motion to execute the agreement by the town administrator.
Commissioner Headland, thank you. And do I hear a second?
Second.
All right, Commissioner Brain with the second there. And, any discussion before we move to vote? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, and that motion carries as none opposed. Um, item I, amended town fee schedule to add an hourly rental rate for the outdoor basketball court at Luddy Park in the amount of twenty dollars for in-town residents and thirty dollars for out-of-town residents. Action requested here is to approve amendment as proposed. And, uh, Mr. Smith, did you have anything that you wanted to add to that? None at all? Okay, all right, fair enough. Um, so again, the action requested here is to approve the amendment as proposed. Do I-
I have a question.
Sure.
I, I do have a question.
Yeah.
I'm going with this.
Yeah, I got a question.
Commissioner Headland, you go right ahead with your question.
Yeah, my question is, is this league play, or I'm just trying to understand it?
I think it would be treated similar to how we rent the baseball diamonds out to the travel teams. So, the, the basketball courts are open park, but if someone wanted to reserve it for whatever, you know-
Okay. All right.
Basketball-
So if somebody just wants to shoot hoops, they want to play ball, you're thirty bucks, right?
Yeah, if I wanted to go shoot hoops, I'm not paying twenty dollars. But if I wanted to make sure that I could go out there and have it all day, and have no one else come out and play against me, then I would probably have to put the, the rental fee in.
So essentially, you know, Commissioner Headland, if you'll lobby, Mr. Mayor, this is essentially a, a, a method for us to de-conflict, uh, use by essentially, you know, two parties at the same time, you know, where, hey, if I, I show up, and I need, want to use the court, and you show up and you want to use the court, and I previously, you know, paid to rent it, then, you know, of course, I take priority. It's just a, a way for us to ensure that there is a method, um, to deal with the competing use at the same time. And this is, you know, the best, best way to do it.
Right.
It also helps fund the continued maintenance of the court and, uh, other facilities as well. I'll yield, Mr. Mayor.
I just want to make sure when I go out there, I want to, I want to play football.
You know you gotta get out there and work on that jump shot, Terry. Come on now. Um, Commissioner Johnson, did that answer your question as well?
Well, uh, that was part of it, but how are we going to police, uh, if somebody, you know, to go out there, I've got it at three o'clock, and somebody else is out there, and I go sit a little bit out in the booth, because I'm got it. How, how are we going to talk to this? Are they, they're going to be like a pile of sheets, somebody put up there every day, that says, who's got it at one time? Or how are we doing that?
It would be reserved through, uh, either myself or through Holden, and we have it. And we can mark it on the town calendar, show that it's reserved, and our members are provided. And there's any, uh, facility, if they have any issues, we can solve the conflict.
And, uh, so I'm not sure if you heard all that, Commissioner Johnson, but I'll just echo some key points, which are that, uh, we do already actually have a calendar, much in the same way that we have an online calendar that's on the, the town's website. You can go to townofyoungsville.org, and you can, for example, uh, click on all calendars, and you can see all the different fields at Luddy Park, and you can also see the basketball court. So, you'll be able to see when it is reserved and when it is not. And if there are any disputes, um, the Parks and Rec staff are more than happy to take those calls and, you know, deal with that, uh, dispute. Um, I think your, part of your, your comments might, uh, refer to after hours, in which case I'll direct the Parks and Rec director to get, uh, with the, uh, police department potentially, to make sure that the information's available. So, you know, there's two people that are, you know, getting into it on the basketball court, about who's reserved when, then they'll be able to access that information to, uh, take care of the dispute.
Thank you.
And so when you say after hours, this is something that you would be renting it all the way through, like nine o'clock at night?
It would be whatever hours you wanted.
As long as you, so you figure it would be all the way there, you know, you're renting?
Correct. Well, I think part of, part of what has happened is, there's outside entities that have been coming in and using the court in the entire day. And people who live in town may want to go shoot some hoops. They can, because of, you know, pickleball's going on, whatever the case may be. So if someone wanted to rent it for two hours, so they can make sure that they can play pickleball, and no one else can interfere with it, they can do that. So.
I just think that's unfortunate, because someone's coming from out of town and using it, and it's an hour, and it's called the hardest instance to have to pay to use it.
That's the only, that's the best legal method that we have, unfortunately.
It is.
Any other comments, questions, concerns? All right, hearing none. I'll reiterate, the action requested here is to approve the amendment as proposed. Do I hear a motion to approve?
I'll move to approve.
Thank you.
All right, we got Commissioner Brain with the motion, and Commissioner Johnson with the second. And is there any additional discussion before we move to vote? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, I think I got Commissioner Headland in there as well. Um, so the eyes have the amendment as, is approved as proposed. Uh, reports on the business, this meeting has gone for two hours, and so I'm not going to give a sub box about anything, spike any footballs or anything like that. I will, uh, yield my time to, uh, town administrator, Mr. Cordero.
Thank you, sir. I'll try to be brief. S C D O T has approved our utility plans for the Main Street project, which is very good news. Um, so, we are waiting on some additional feedback on updates, uh, updates to our plans. Um, got back and forth with them, and right now, we're kind of working on a signaling plan, and we're planning, you know, when the work's going to be done, to ensure that there's minimal disruption to traffic. Um, but based on the current progress, we anticipate bidding that out, I would say, mid-February, so in about thirty days. And we anticipate to begin construction thirty to sixty days after that. So, we're looking at March, April timeframe for the Main Street project. The public works facility project is moving along. We're estimated to move into that building now in June. The extremely wet weather that we've had over the past couple of months has delayed the project, along with a couple of, um, um, site-related issues that are not major, but just, uh, kind of in the normal course of things. So, again, we anticipate moving that, uh, or moving into that building in June. That's all I have, sir.
All right. Any questions, comments, concerns from Mr. Cordero? All right, hearing none. I'll start, and just go left to right, and start with Commissioner Brain. I don't have any. Okay. Commissioner Redd?
Yes, sir.
All right, Commissioner Johnson?
No further, thank you.
All right, Commissioner Headland?
I, I just have one thing. Uh, we've got a road clean scheduled February twentieth. Does anybody can come up and help, uh, just give me a buzz? And I'm, I was also contacted by a gentleman to help oversee, um, trying to get, uh, the out-of-town Youngsville roads, um, maintained and cleaned. Um, so that's actually the big prize. The key is just to get businesses or organizations to adopt some of these roads. Anyway, that's it.
No, fair enough. Uh, good commentary there, because I've noticed, uh, I've noticed a lot have been here lately, uh, taking the kids to middle school, so, um, yeah, thank you for, uh, for that. Um, Ms. Pat Myblow, Finances, did you have any updates?
I can read your report unless, that's what-
I mean, we've got your report, we can read it just fine. If you have any updates that you wanted to add to it? Oh, yeah, I like the way you finished. Uh, Fire Department, um, there's still been causes for COVID, they are not in attendance, but they have also, uh, provided a report that's in the packet. And, uh, I'll run over to, uh, Mr. Smith for that.
There, I have nothing to give at this point.
All right, thank you so much, sir. And, uh, Mr. Smith, with Parks and Recreation, did you have anything to add to your report that was included in our packet already?
I didn't.
Okay. And, uh, Ms. Klinger with planning and zoning, did you have anything that you wanted to add at this time?
Uh, nothing to add to, uh, what was already in the packet, sir.
All right, anything in particular, I mean, anything outside of the packet, or we just, we just standardize, we're looking at the, what's been submitted?
Um, there, at this time, there will be, the only thing I can think of that might be coming up would be the, um, apartment, that'd be an annexation for the corner of Cedar Creek and Hicks, but that's going to be a couple months down the road.
Okay, fair enough, fair enough. We appreciate that. Um, and we'll go with the police department? Mr. Mike, did you have anything you wanted to add?
I think I have a, I have a report, I'll let somebody read it.
If, if it's anything that's above and beyond, the report has been submitted, unless you wanted to have the limelight a little bit, I think we're good to go.
Numbers are voting last year, so we're good.
That's outstanding. That is outstanding. I like it. Um, and I've got your town attorney, and I apologize that I don't have, uh, the town attorney's name in front of me.
Sure, so I apologize for that. I, I just made you a little, little bigger on our screen, Ms. Barbara Jones, um, but, uh, recognize, uh, Katie at this time, um, we're happy to have you. And just to let the board know very briefly, um, Michael Cohen, as, as expert as he is, has, has moved on from, uh, Hartzell Law Group to, uh, take another, uh, professional opportunity. And we're in the very capable hands of Ms. Katie Barber Jones. Uh, she'll be the assigned attorney from the, uh, Hartzell Law Group for us moving forward, um, although we continue to enjoy the research of the entire firm and the entire firm's representation. So, Katie, welcome.
Thank you so much. Um, Mayor, Board, I am very excited to have the chance to serve the board and the town. Um, you know, we'll miss Michael. I know I have big shoes to sell. Uh, but I just wanted to let you know that, um, you know, introduce myself. I'm sorry, I can't be there as a person to meet you, but, uh, I look forward to the, the day, hopefully very soon, when I can be. And, um, just, I'd be happy to take any questions about my experience or us taking over the job, but I'd love to work in with the Phil and the staff as far as they're just very attractive. So, please let me know if you have any questions.
Thank you for that. We'll do that, and, uh, welcome to the team. We're happy to have you.
Thank you.
All right, and moving along to, uh, town with architecture, Ms. Heard, did you have anything that you wanted to add?
Yes, sir, nothing to vote with you, Mark.
All right. Sounds good. Uh, item ten, on the agenda, is closed session. And, uh, we do need to go into closed session under the Carolina General Statutes one four three dash two eighteen, number eight, a three, which is preservation of attorney-client privilege. Um, I will entertain a motion to go into closed session.
Prior, prior to closed session, I would respectfully request a roll call relative to item A to item B.
So a motion is on the table to go into closed session?
I'll move to go into closed session.
All right, you got a first, and do we have a second?
Second.
All right, any discussion before we move to vote? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, and that means none opposed. We're now in closed session. So now we're back in open session. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
All right, first, second, any discussion before we move to vote? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
This meeting is adjourned. Have a great night, guys.